Okay, let's begin right on time. Bradlboro Planning Commission meeting is convened. Let's deal with last meetings minutes of January 6th.
This is Lindsay. I make a motion to approve.
Okay.
A second.
All right. Thanks, Gary. Thanks, Lindsay. Any comments on the minutes? No, seeing none. Interruptive theories. All those in favor, please raise your hands. Keep it up. That's the people I can see. What about Gary? What's your vote, Gary?
My vote? Hang on there, buddy. I'm working on this. How's that?
And Dan, do you want to weigh in on the minutes in any way? Comments or vote?
I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay, abstention.
Are you an abstention or are you voting in favor?
I'll vote in favor. I'm sorry. I just jumped on, but.
Sorry, I didn't mean to.
No, thanks for clarifying that, Sue. Okay, I don't have any announcements. Does anyone else?
No, I don't have any announcements either.
It's a slow season. It's winter.
It's not slow.
Oh, okay. Feels that way for me. All right, moving on to our monthly town plan 2026 agenda item. Got a few parts to this, and I'll just further do pass it over to Sue or Steve. I mean, Sue or John?
Go, Sue.
You want me to go ahead?
Yeah.
Okay. So we, Steve and I continue to meet with John biweekly to kind of keep on track. And, you know, our most recent meetings, we've been talking about some of the public outreach. And I know that John has had some conversations with Tom as well. We are proposing to kind of go out with a quick three-question survey that kind of gets at the values work that we have done and will help shape, you know, some of the key themes that we're going to want to address in this plan. Our current plan had five themes that kind of emerged out of the public outreach. You know, people really aren't attending a lot of meetings these days. So this is just another way to kind of collect some information that we can put together to identify the values as well as, you know, put some of that towards the themes that might emerge that guide this update. So what you received in your packets is kind of a brief survey. We took, you know, from the work that we did in the fall, we were trying to identify values. The recommendation from the planning commission was to, you know, put some value words out there. So that's one of the questions like, well, I should go through. The first one is what makes Bradlboro special today? So this is kind of like the strengths of a SWAT kind of question. And that would be a free-form answer. The second would be what would you like to see change in the future? Or we could ask, you know, what are the top issues facing Bradlboro? That's kind of the weaknesses or the threats kind of question getting at. And then, you know, asking the question of choosing four words that best express your values for building a strong community. And hopefully you've all seen the words. I can read them if you want to. And then there would also be a space for people to write in for their own words. And then, you know, another free-form question about if they wanted to tell us anything about those words. So that's kind of it.
You know, we could.
Sue, we have a bunch of demographic questions that are optional at the end, right?
Yes, yeah. I'm mostly getting at where people, where do people live? Are they working? Do they own property? Do they rent? That kind of thing. So that would be the survey. We do it on Survey Monkey. We could also, because we have that platform, we could also put hard copies in various locations, library, town offices, senior center we could bring it to, get it out to two different groups. And, you know, maybe have it out there for a couple of weeks and then see what we get back. So it's kind of a way to kick off that we're working on this town plan for the public, get some information back from them. That's the proposal.
Okay, yeah, commissioners, what are your thoughts? Dan, I see your hand up. Go first.
Okay, thanks, Tom. Sue, has this been done before as part of the town plan?
It hasn't. The last time we kind of identified the themes by, well, the process was a little bit different, but the way we identified the themes is we had a big kind of community meeting and it was kind of the issues that raised to the top in that meeting. So we didn't do it in a survey form. We did it more in a public meeting form.
Those were back in 2010, 2011?
Yeah, 2010. Yeah.
I just have, I mean, I have a couple of thoughts or questions, I guess, for your thought process on this.
Go ahead.
You know, for as far as getting your sample, that's one challenge for sure. As you were talking about using Survey Monkey or different forum locations or whatnot. But even the outcome or the, so let's just say if it were a SWAT analysis type format, you know, depending on your sample, you definitely have some even issues with the data. Like, you know, just in terms of it being, I know you want a subjective reflection from the folks who are answering the survey, but it could essentially, it's sort of, the potential is that it oversimplifies what goes into the town plan, right? Like whatever the topics are, you're going to getting a vote of who thinks this is a top issue or this is a top issue. It almost seems, I don't know if it's, I just, I'm just curious. Your thought process as to why this is necessary? Won't you just find pretty much what you're already expecting to find? Or are you looking for surprises?
So Dan, if it's okay, Sue, if I could go?
No, please, yeah.
So, so Dan, the first is, the first comment I would make is you're going to have and the same challenges no matter what process you use with the quantity of data that you collect and input. You know, as I understand roughly the last town plan, there was a relatively small group of people that spent quite a bit of time, albeit taking some input in whatever way they took input, to create a mission statement, if you will. So I don't think that, I don't think honestly that would change the input challenge. The reason we did it the way we did it was because we wanted to both get qualitative and narrative input on what the strengths and weaknesses of the town plan are. I'll be at the first two questions. We also wanted to get, because we thought the word, a word heat map was a very effective way of showing kind of what the priorities and values of the town was. And so the third question is a, I don't know what the terminology is, but word heat map type question. In other words, we can sort of count up the words and make the more commonly cited ones bigger and the other ones fewer. And then we could also avoid the onerous, my opinion, onerous effort in trying to do a mission statement. You know, trying to do a mission statement with any size crowd is, in my experience, almost impossible. So that was, that was the thought process behind that. I don't think regardless of what the words are, it will change the chapter contents. It's simply an attempt to gather a very broad picture of the town feeling, for want of a better word. Sue, would you, would you have anything to add to that?
No, I think, I think you did a really good job, other than to just kind of reiterate. Yeah, it's not necessarily going to change, it wouldn't change the chapter content. It might be, and there'll still be some more maybe targeted input sessions on those, on particular chapters, although some of them we've talked about before, like housing. We've done a lot of work. There was a lot of community input, same with bicycling and pedestrian infrastructure, like, you know, we're not going to go back out on those things because they really haven't changed. But the input may be, you know, especially like when it comes to values, it might affect how we decide to write goals or strategies in the town plan. It's just kind of high-level informing, you know, maybe some of the decisions the planning commission will make.
Regarding.
You know, honestly, if there's a surprise that comes out of the value questionnaire, then maybe it's a great next set of conversations to have with the community that says, you know, you said you, I'm not even going to make something up, but, you know, you said this and we thought the community's values was that and we should talk about this more and see what the, or what and why the disconnect is.
Okay, Lindsay, what do you think?
Number three has a question mark at the end, but it's not really stated as a question.
Wait, Lindsay, I thought your rewording was very good.
Typo. I did suggest an alternative for number three. Choose four words that express the values you associate with building a strong community. I thought it was just a little clunky the way it was worded, but I don't really have a preference either way. I just wanted to share that. And do we need a motion for this to go forward or do we just?
We'd like a motion, but again, I want to make sure that we address everybody's questions. And I certainly don't want to shut off conversation. We did think about this, but obviously there's great input from the group that might change some of what we do, so.
I will say to be, I don't know, technical or precise with Robert's rules, that just having a motion doesn't mean that we're going to vote on it. Often, often it's protocol or best practice to have the motion like early on in the agenda item. And then the discussion happens, you know, after being seconded. And then the vote happens when people are ready for the vote.
Okay, so I move that, I move that we use the recommended wording and publish as proposed by staff.
I'll second. It's Lindsay.
Okay.
Then we can have the discussion by Robert.
Right. And some people have already proposed some little amendments, which it sounded, seemed like people were in favor of, and maybe there will be more. I'll go next. Let's see, I wrote a note about March 1st somewhere. Yeah, it says in the beginning, the questionnaire will be open until March 1st. Is that? No, okay.
I just, yeah, I was just putting something in.
That was just a filler date. Okay.
Yeah, I'm not stuck on March 1st.
We're going to give it a few months, right?
I was thinking we'd give it like a month.
Oh, well, then it could be March 3rd.
It could be March 3rd. I mean, why do you, I guess I would say, why do you think we need?
Yeah, I suppose we don't, yeah.
I feel like if it just languishes out there, it's not gonna, you know, it'll peter off. People are going to do it. If they're going to do it, they're going to do it early.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think Dan has a good point. I mean, the people that are going to give you input are going to give you input and it's going to tail off quickly, in my opinion.
Maybe one thing to consider would to allow for one town newsletter to go out with a link to the survey. And we just got one, so I'm assuming that'll be at the beginning of March. So maybe allow enough time for that.
Yeah, that's a great idea. It'll go out in the beginning of March, so yeah.
So maybe a month and a half.
You know, Sue, the other thing is you're going to bring up, I'm sure briefly at least, the issue of the community conversations. And we can certainly put this as part of the community conversations as well. Make sure people have an opportunity to address that if they want.
Yeah, to grab it in a second round with people who want to answer it in person.
Maybe we leave it open for months. Maybe we do.
As long as, as long as that doesn't promote anybody doing, you know, clandestine multi-entries.
It's not a scientific survey.
Yeah, right, right. It's honor system. Okay. What else? Oh, down below, this is kind of, well, I won't say it's a minor thing because it's maybe important to some people. For the residence category, there could be a fifth category, just like leaving it open, because there's homeowners, there's renters, and there's people who own property in Bradlboro. But, you know, there could be other people associated with the town and/or who live here who don't fit into those categories, who may answer the survey. So I don't know, you know, if we should, we just leave it open as other with a line for them to write.
Just as added input, by the way, on those demographic questions, I think the thought process behind them was we would love to collect information, but we don't want to get people pissed off, you know, like why my, you know, input isn't as good because I'm a renter or whatever, you know, people are nutty honestly these days. So it's as, it's as passive a question as possible, in my opinion.
Are you, are you okay with just adding a fifth line just to capture some people who may not fit to those? Okay. The, I guess I see value either way in the first question, just being simple and broad like that. What makes Bradlboro special today? But what if, what if it's a little addition to that is what makes Bradlboro special today and should be preserved? Does that, does that seem helpful to anyone else as it, it does, it seems to me, or?
Yeah, I like that. That's nice.
Maintain.
I think it might also be helpful to have word limits on some of these.
Sure.
Because you might get some, and those folks who want to really contribute longer answers will figure out how to get in touch with you anyways, so maybe keep it to a limit there.
And the last.
Did you ever comment?
Say again, John?
Dan, I think had a comment.
Yeah, that's kind of, sure, thanks, John. This kind of gets to the reason that you're asking these questions and someone might have a quirky response to why or why do you need to know type of thing. I'm just curious if, if this, I know it says all questions are optional at the top of the demographic questions. I'm just curious if it really is necessary at all to have these. I mean, I just want to put that on the table that if you really want responses and you want this to be anonymous, there's that way to go. Or I guess what I would say about the, having the time limit is if you have, let's say, four residence categories, I would want a decent-sized sample from each one of those categories, if possible. Like if I found by March 1st or whatever the date is that I don't have any renters who have responded to the survey, then I would keep the survey open and do outreach to get more renters, for example, right? So either you have these categories for a reason or, you know, I know that in tallying the data, it would be nice to have, but, you know, you either have it for a reason or you don't do it. You don't need it, you know?
That's a great, that's a great point, Sue. I would actually agree with Dan on that. We could then target specific demographics if we're not getting answers, you know, from a representative sample. Is that what you said?
Yeah, that's basically, I mean, that's, that's the reason to have these questions. But then again, you're have, you have them as optional. So, you know, one way to go would be, okay, if it's really optional, then why have them at all? Or if they're required, so I would make them required and I would say, you know, you can also put, like Tom was saying, other, you know, as an option, right? But you want an answer to those questions for some reason. So even with the first question of where do you live? You know, it, the, I would just say the first question should be, are you a Bradlboro resident? Question mark, right? And then yes or no? And then, I mean, you then do what you will with that data.
Hey, Dan, what if, what if we said something upfront, which is like, we would like, we're asking you to answer these questions because we want a representative sample. You're, they're, they're going to be anonymous, right? Just asking what your demographic is, we want to identify you personally. So maybe we say, you know, your reply will be anonymous, but we're asking you these demographic questions or whatever use, word we use, so that we get a representative sample. We would love to have you answer them if you could, something like that.
Yeah, rather than being completely optional, you mean?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you, you would ideally like to get answers to these questions.
Yeah.
You know, if they choose not to answer them, then what can you do? But, you know, if it is on Survey Monkey, you could make it conditional that, you know, they answer this question and then they can keep going. But that's a whole other thing, you know, I don't know. That would be putting the, and that's the other thing. You could put these questions, the demographic questions first before the what makes Bradlboro special, et cetera.
But I like your, I like the suggestion of telling people why we want them to put that data so that they know that they're doing it for a reason rather than just say randomly, if you will. Okay.
Steve, you want to weigh in on that?
Yeah, I was thinking that if we had the appetite for it, that we might want to add a question about age generally, just in broad ranges. If what we're trying to do is make sure that we get at least enough responses from different types of people as we're going through this. And another potential category, then I think we'd have to be quite careful on how we do it. But I think it would be nice to get a sense of, particularly with certain questions about like transportation and mobility. If we had some way of getting at, do you have any difficulties getting around like physical disability impacting mobility in a much more succinct way? But obviously that's a sensitive topic. Could be really useful to make sure that we got any reasonably demographically representative amount of responses from people who are actually disabled and need accommodations in the environment.
And so for, for that example, you think the survey would, would capture that? The, the mobility and transportation issue?
I don't think that we're asking direct things about that. So maybe that is something that we ask in a more topic-related thing later on. Although, you know, I guess we'd have to think about how we would pair that up with other data that we're getting from, from this more broadly. But maybe I'll just put a pin in that. But I do think that asking about general age ranges would be a good way to make sure that we're getting a broad sample.
Yeah.
Gary's had his hand up for a while.
Thanks.
Well, thank you, Lindsay, for that.
Can I just say quickly that, can I just say quickly, Gary, on that topic that I, that I agree with the age thing? That sounds good to me to add that in. I mean, obviously there's no, there's no limit to how much demographics we could go here, but that, that seems like a pretty, you know, foundational, basic, you know, distinguisher of, you know, types of people. That's just, I know there's race and all, gender and all these other things too, but I'm for the age thing. Go ahead, Gary.
Well, I, just to tailcoat off what you were saying and John in with Dan, also with the part where it says, where do you work? You could have other, but you have also people that are self-employed as well too. So could either put other or self-employed. A lot of people are doing business for themselves, as we know. Where do you live? I kind of like what Dan was saying in regards to that. Now the question is, do, do we start asking people what their median income is along with their age? And, and are they, I mean, do we start really getting digging deep? Sounds like a census type of thing, if you ask me. I mean, how do you broad stroke this to make it more in line of what, what is people in that, in their demographics are looking for in, in for us to what we are going to be doing as far as moving ahead? Because a lot of people, like I said, are self-employed nowadays. They're leaving businesses or whatever. And far as what the residency category is, I don't know, that kind of, you know, excludes some people that are homeless too, if you know what I mean. So when they are getting residency, homeowner, permanent homeowner, seasonal renter, I'm not a resident, but I own property in Bradlboro. I don't know if number four is a good thing to have. I mean, how much business do you do other than as a landlord? Because it says, basically, just say basically you're a homeowner or a homeowner with seasonal, you're renting it out for Airbnb or visiting nurse. So I don't know if you need number four.
Thoughts, John? Sue?
I don't want to overcomplicate the demographics.
I agree with Sue.
So, you know, income and that kind of stuff, it's just, it's not a scientific survey. I, we're just trying to get some information, I think, in the residence category. I think other helps. If, if there's somebody that is homeless or here staying in a hotel, like they could always answer that there. I can reframe the where do you work. I mean, it, you know, I can understand if you're self-employed, maybe you're working in Bradlboro and outside of Bradlboro. So that, that maybe isn't the best.
We can rephrase it as where do you primarily work? Because then it can be mutually exclusive. And, you know, if we really needed to have an explainer, like you'll sometimes see on a survey that says like, you know, however many hours a week, like 21 hours a week or more or something like that, if you're full-time, you know, at the bottom. If somebody really, really is confused, which I doubt they would be about that. Generally putting other when there is something else that could come up is a good idea. But it seems like, especially with the first question and I think the third question as well. We've captured all of the potential.
The work question is, you know, it's, it's really about people that maybe spend a lot of time in Bradlboro, but they don't live here. Maybe they're invested in the community. So that, that's kind of why that question is there. It's not so much about what's the spread of people, but it's more of, okay, so you don't live in Bradlboro. So what's your, what's your interest in Bradlboro, I guess?
Yeah, what's your vested interest? What, what do you, what do you come for or whatever? I mean, business, it could be just coming in, flying in to do business real quick and leaving. So there's that, that, you know, people just come for a little time to do business and then they're here for a little bit and they leave.
I'm fine with the staff doing whatever they think is best as far as the demographic questions go. I don't know if I need to be so formal as to call the question, but I think this is good. I think it'll be nice and I'm ready to move on.
I just have my, my last question, which I'd love if a commissioner or two could weigh in on. Back to the page before about the, the, the value words for building a strong community. Now, maybe, maybe rephrase, oh, building a strong community was Lindsay's proposal too. Is strong community the most, the most clear term? Or what about something like ideal Bradlboro?
Yeah, I kind of like that, that strong part is, you know.
I like strong.
Bradlboro.
We like strong community? Okay. So plenty of people would interpret that to be whether it's, you know, civics or, or business or recreation or housing. That term, that term could in many people's minds cover all those bases. Okay. Dan?
Yeah, just a quick point, question. Is the term strong community used in the town plan?
Good question.
Like, I mean, obviously this is, this is, this is all working toward improving the town plan, right?
Yep.
What's the term that, like, you know, we could say a well-planned town or whatever, you know, whatever the terminology is, but is that term used in the town plan? I don't know.
No, it's not used in the town planned currently.
Okay.
It's, doesn't mean it couldn't be used in the, in the update of the town plan. If you think it's not clear enough, I can also put a little framing, you know, like another sentence or two to frame this question.
I think it's a good term, actually. I, I'm just saying, is it, you know, I guess I'm getting back to, you know, so we're doing a community survey to improve the town plan, right?
No, we're doing a community survey to update the town plan.
So is it?
Update, okay.
It's kind of like a pulse check of where we are now.
Understood. So I guess I'm still not clear as to why we are doing this survey in the first place.
So we're, we're doing the survey, and this is our opinion, because we need to have some broad, you know, we're going to do the chapters, we're going to do obviously the, the required data in terms of land use plans and energy plans and all the rest. But we need, we wanted some broader sense of what the community thinks of themselves, thinks of the future, thinks of what can be improved. Some of the, some of that data we wanted in the form of narratives that we could use as sort of qualitative stories. And some of it we wanted as data that could be in some way quantified, i.e. the word heat maps. That, that's really it. You know, as I say, it's arguably an alternative to going out and trying to get a mission statement with 12,000 people. You know, as I say, it's it's arguably an alternative to going out and trying to get a mission statement with twelve thousand people.
Well, if I may follow up, I I guess the thing is, I I I understand that previously we've had a meeting or two where those types of uh concerns were brought up. And now we're talking about doing a survey to assess people's interest in certain topics which are included in the town plan.
No, I would say it's a snapshot of the, I would say it's a snapshot of the mood. I I don't think it's a, I don't think it has anything, honestly, to do with prioritizing the the elements or chapters of the town plan.
Right.
Okay, so then why are we doing it?
To get a snapshot of the town's mood, strategic mood, you know? I think Brattleboro is is great because it's caring, it's, you know.
Okay, so this, sorry, so the outcome from this survey is going to be included in the town plan?
Yes. Specifically, it will be in the introduction pla- area of the town plan, which is the way we intended. Well, I mean, we've also done a chapter stuff, which we didn't gonna, we weren't gonna show you tonight, but it would be kind of to start the town plan off to give you an idea of the broader picture to the population of of what makes Brattleboro Brattleboro to them. We're caring, we're, you know, we're, we're kind, we're whatever we are.
Creative, adaptable.
Yeah, creative, adaptable.
We're the strongest town from twenty twenty-three.
Yeah, that that's basically what I'm hearing all over again, like strong town. So we have to probably, I'm just thinking of coming something different or original. I mean, we already are there with that.
Just trying to.
It's not gonna change what the energy chapter looks like, for example.
I think the pulse now in Brattleboro is the future. And I think we should look at the pulse of what's going on now downtown and in Brattleboro to get a better language on that.
That'll come out.
Where do you see the future of Brattleboro be more, I think, acceptable? Versus everyone's hearing strong town all over. But that's me. I mean, hey, if if you feel comfortable with that, you can run with it, breathe it.
I think with these values, we're gonna get a good sense of if people think the town is actually strong or if it you know, or if it has struggles or challenges, they'll get captured in those value words and how they explain it, so. Um, yeah, is there, Bonnie, I don't think you spoke, but we can, if you want, feel free, we can move on.
I haven't, but I like this. I like this plan and I was just curious where it was gonna be distributed and because that would make a difference on who's answering the questions.
So, so um, you know, it'll be pushed out on social media, the e-newsletter. Um, I would send it out to like DVA to send out to their membership and the Chamber of Commerce and all the other contacts I have around to kind of get it into newsletters or get it out to their um lists.
So Bonnie, the distribution is, the distribution is limited by the resources we have to distribute it. So if you wanted, for example, to pick some up, some paper copies up and put them in the church, that, I think that would be great.
I was thinking a lot of, I was thinking also St. Michael's. I was thinking the churches are a great place to to put these because it's a different, it's a different demographic than just people um hanging around town.
Absolutely. I I don't think we're, we're in any way, shape or form wanting to limit this. It's simply a matter of, you know, Sue's got other things to do and so she can't go to like every place where somebody might pick one of these up.
Gary's, Gary's my trusty um secret weapon.
I'm the goalkeeper.
Yeah, distribution.
I'm the marketing strategist.
Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. It's been seconded and then very informally and casually, we've made some changes and amendments and gonna entrust that to staff. Um, so then is the next time we'll see this survey? Sorry, I'm interrupting my own kind of motion process. Is the next time we'll see this just when it's actually out there? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, so I, I don't know what Robert's rules are, Tom, but what I want to make sure is clear is my review, revision of my motion was that we approve the motion to move forward with the input that the commission has given. We trust the staff to make good judgment about, you know, what to include, what not to include, and we're gonna go ahead and move forward and get that out.
Yeah, sounds good to me.
We don't need to bring it back again.
Right, that's not what I was saying. I just wanted to wrap it up by by just making sure we weren't or that the next time we'll see it is when it's out there in the world.
Right.
Which is, so it's a ladder. Okay, um, all those in favor, please raise your hands and hold it for a moment. That's Lindsay, John, Bonnie, Dan, myself. And then Gary, how do you vote? His hand is up. Okay, that's all of us. Moving on to the second part of the town plan agenda item, it's about community conversations.
Yes, so the the second, some towns do this like toolkit where people go out, like like planning commissioners. What we're proposing is planning commissioners and others um will go out and have small group conversations. It can be family members, it can be neighbors, it could be, you know, your social groups. Um, or, you know, if you've got time, I can hook you up with some of the groups that I am often in conversation with. And the idea would be to, you know, we'd have some questions to ask them. I mean, some of them might be, you know, from the survey. Um, and then maybe some other targeted questions and the, you know, the the goal is to have, you know, no more than an hour long conversation. Um, and it's just a way to get, ways to get input into the plan. Um, again, not many people come to like one large meeting. It's, that's really difficult to facilitate. People really like if you go to where they're at. So that's the concept that we wanna um, you know, do and wanted to gather from, we'll get some feedback on that, but also gather some ideas, some topics that you might wanna you know, be talking about with the community.
So ju- just to be clear, though, this would be, while it might include what we just discussed, this would be probably more specific, more topic specific and potentially more provocative in terms of asking people, you know, not do you believe in world peace type questions, but how do you balance various challenges? And obviously, we would want more input from the planning commission on what kinds of questions, types of questions those would be. And we would need more people to do this. I I volunteered to do it um so that we could be broader than, again, in between Sue distributing all these surveys, going out and doing these as well. Joke aside, we we need more resources to do this than just staff.
And it doesn't have to be the planning, just planning commission members. There might be, you know, some community volunteers that that might be interested in having a small conversation.
Yeah, so transportation or, you know, uh, housing or any of those kinds of things might be. The the key being, I think that we have a common script that you would use so that we get the same data back so that it's usable. It's apples to apples, if you will.
Yeah, it would be a common script. There'd be a sign-in sheet, you know, it'd just be basically a packet that you can, somebody could take and have a conversation, facilitate a conversation around.
I like this idea. Yeah, I think it's, I think it's great. Um, I think, uh, you know, I I don't really have experience on planning commissions anywhere else, but I did know a person or or two in Guilford on their planning commission and you know, um, in Guilford, they don't, they don't have uh any staff planners. And so they, I think, it's fair to say they get a whole lot less done. And maybe there's a lot less to do because it's not a, you know, it's just a village town. It's not like a city town like ours is. But um, the result without having staff is that then if they're gonna get anything done, commissioners have to do it. Right? I mean, they put a little bit on the Wyndham Regional Commission staff too, but um, or maybe a fair amount, but um, you know, when they wrote the town plan, they they actually, commissioners actually wrote it, right? I believe, um, to a fair degree. So anyway, I like, you know, I think, I think we should jump on this opportunity and, you know, it's not like each of us is, are gonna be um you know, uh, convening a stadium of people and becoming, you know, expert charismatic. You know, facilitators. It's just get together with some friends, some people in a shop, some neighbors.
Yep.
Even one-on-one, two-on-two, you know, I don't think it even has to be a dozen people, just have some conversations. And that's great that there'll be a packet to kind of guide things. Um, I want to get a sense if, uh, with, you know, some rewording, if so so I thought about this a a little bit and I've had a couple or a few questions in mind for a while. And I think I could come up with a lot more, but I haven't put more thought into it than these. One of them is um, is about the the balance of historic preservation. And so and I'm I'm offering these right now because maybe if, especially if John and Sue, who came up with this exercise, think that more or less these are good questions to put on there, then uh could get the get the gears of other commissioners' brains churning if if maybe you haven't thought of any ideas right in this moment. But so one thing I wrote was um, which, if any, areas of town have buildings with historic character that are valuable enough to the public good to justify adding extra regulations upon those private properties? So what I'm trying to get at there is what do people, what, you know, is there enough consensus, so to speak, amongst the public that certain areas are really worthy of preservation? And and should we, should we, and it shouldn't just be done willy-nilly because it has real implications upon the property owners in those areas. It's regulations upon them, but not upon others. So there's that balance of public good versus private, you know, interests. And the way I wrote it was a little clunky, so, you know, it could be improved, probably.
Sue, Sue, please correct me if I'm wrong, but we could, we could collect these questions, right, and bring them back in March and then sort of have a, in fact, I think that was the intent, if I remember right, was we'd bring them back in March and you know, sort of have a run-through with the group and make sure everybody's comfortable with the question. So it doesn't, this doesn't have to be decided tonight by anyone.
I just thought it might be helpful to
Sure.
put out a question or two to, yeah, I'll I'll do, I'll just do one more, which is um, you know, the, especially since there's been so much talk about housing and needing more housing. Um, but in previous, in our our current town plan, there's focus on um, you know, preserving agricultural land, encouraging growth in areas already developed, maintaining and enhancing the natural environment. So then I wonder, should we try to get a pulse on the the push and pull or dichotomy? I don't know of, hey, is housing such, at such a a a crucial need that let's just expand or allow expansion into natural areas? You know, question mark. That wasn't a question, phrase is a question, but it would, it would get at that that thing like, hey, public, do you, do you care and need, uh, do you care about and need housing so much that our previous goals of compact growth and 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 maybe almost no expansion? Are are you looser with those now because of where we are? Or do you want to keep them? How, how they've been established? So there are a couple of big questions I have um to help guide things and see what people want.
Bonnie?
Yeah.
I don't know how this fits into the town plan, but um I have a background in developing community gardens. I developed many community gardens in the Boston area um along the Charles River on property where large buildings were taken down. And I feel like that's something that's really um lacking and needed here, especially with the political climate and the way I feel like it would address future needs of people, but I all, I feel like it's needed within, within the city, like not, like there's one way out in West Brattleboro that's hard to get to, but I feel like it it would just be such a great thing to have a two or three community gardens that people can walk to or take a little bus to quickly and um it just gives people a sense of community that, that I don't feel is happening within our, within our little town. I mean, out, out, outside of town, when people have yards, it's easy for them to do their little gardens and grow their vegetables, but there's a lot of people in town who don't have that opportunity. And it would be a really get, a great gift for people to be able to do that. I don't know how that fits into, you know, what we're talking about, but I think it would be an important um part of building a beautiful community.
I think that could be asked to the community. I mean, Bonnie, you think that's important? You know, I think, I think potentially other people do too, and that that could be asked to the community in some way as well.
Yeah, and I definitely think there's something there about like getting to, you know, building a sense of community. So what are those things that maybe will help you build a sense of community in your
That's a great comment.
Something like that.
Yeah, that's a great comment.
I don't, I'm not exactly sure how this could come out in a community conversation, but I feel like it does matter to our plan, which is something I've been thinking about a lot lately, is how segregated Brattleboro feels. And I don't necessarily mean racially segregated. I mean, class segregated. Different types of people not having a lot of opportunities in our town to interact with one another and people being very siloed. Um, you know, like we don't necessarily have spaces um that the town is involved in, other than maybe the library. Um, where people come together across a lot of different boundaries on a really regular basis.
You know, Sue, I could almost make a, uh, I could also make a connection between what Lindsay and what Bonnie said in terms of how do you build a stronger community? And and, you know, one question might be, you know, community gardens, another question might be spaces where people can cross silos to talk to one another and learn about one another.
All right, I think, oh, Gary, do you, do you have a a question you need to get off your, off your mind for this exercise?
No, I'm just trying to breathe.
Okay, all right.
Sorry.
Yeah, so so like, like John said, you know, this is, I think um staff is gonna receive these questions in between now and for a month, let's just say, something like that. And I think it's important that all of us do give this some thought and come up with some some ideas, statements, questions, you know, whatever, then staff can can um massage into this toolkit.
If you need, if the commission needs seeds for, you know, the kinds of questions you would ask, we could certainly send out a list of proposed chapters so that you could kind of see how the different chapters are and, you know, think of your questions in that context, if you will. Economic development, for example, land use, that kind of stuff.
Yeah, yeah, it might be helpful. Yeah, so I hope if, you know, if any um commissioners find that they're struggling or not, not quite sure exactly, you know, what to do with this, I please, you know, reach out to me, reach out to staff, reach out to John, and I, you know, we want input from from everyone and to build this together. So over the next month or maybe two. So, okay, um, let's move on to the last part of the town plan section.
All right, so um, the last thing we were gonna do is um look at another area of town like we did the last, last month. We looked at um, a good part of Putney Road, south of the roundabout. So tonight, um, we were going to look at north of the roundabout. Um, and just give me a minute to get the slideshow up. Um, and just, yeah, have a conversation um about this area, assets, opportunities, um, things that you maybe would want to change. Okay, so can you all see my screen now?
Yes.
Okay, so again, you know, we're just trying to um focus on areas that might maybe needs a little bit more attention um or targeted investment. So we're talking about this Route Five corridor. Um, if you can see my cursor. Um, it basically runs to the east of the interstate, then it crosses the interstate and goes up to um Jefferson. Um, it includes Old Ferry Road. Um, and so that's just kind of an overview of it. Um, the south end of it is um actually the intersection of I ninety-one and New Hampshire Route Nine. That's here at, um, these, some of these images are a little old. I think this, I don't know if it's Brattleboro Ford or Faith's I think this, I don't know if it's Brattleboro Ford or Faith Ford now. And then across the street is the convenient MD and 99. This quarter, you know, there's little bits of sidewalk here and there, but it does not connect. And there's a real lack of pedestrian infrastructure. I think the crosswalk you see in this top image is the only crosswalk in this area. Particularly to the east side of the roadway, there is a lot of industrial development. There on Putney Road, facing Putney Road, there is a lot of retail development, a lot of auto dominated uses. In fact, most of our car lots are here. There's, there are a couple elsewhere. There is limited residential development. However, there are a lot of people living in this quarter, particularly because of the motels and the state's motel program. So as we move up, you'll see some of those motels. So again, you know, we're not built to be residential and therefore there's, you know, the infrastructure, the pedestrian infrastructure is not good. There are some vacant and underutilized lots. There's a lack, lack of connect, connected side streets. But again, on the west side, you can't really connect it, backs up to the I-91. It is a state highway and there's heavy truck traffic because of the industrial development and kind of trucking hub that it is with, by CNS. So again, this is just moving a little bit north. The pictures on the left are on the west side, again, these auto dominated uses. And you see one of the motels that has had some residential use occurring in it. Across the street is what's called Full Flex Field. In the back is the Full Flex Industrial Building. This field kind of has a bit of a long history with the town. For a while, for, for a long time, it was used for recreational, you know, fields, frisbee and that kind of stuff. And there was.
Officially or unofficially?
Unofficially, the, the owners allowed that. It is in private ownership. And then there was, at some point in the nineties, there was kind of a, or the early two thousands, that there was kind of a dust-up. But that is undeveloped, quite a flat lovely parcel. Again, a little bit further north, you're seeing another auto place. And then across the street is the Agway. So, so some of the retail, and then in the back you can see that wood sided building that also has some retail in it. I'm sorry, wrong way. Brown Court is, let me see what did I do here? Brown Court goes back to the book press, which is on the right, you see this BDCC business. That's the former book press building that you also see in the image to the right. That's kind of this, the book press building has been broken up into various units. And there's kind of light industrial against the grain is there. I think Food Connects, maybe just some warehousing out of there. So there's a variety of kind of. Maybe even some retail kind of going on in this, in this building. Right off of Brown Court, where you see the bus shelter, actually to the left of it is actually the Park and Ride. It lacks a lot of facilities, this isn't a great picture of it, but you're really not missing anything. It lacks facilities, there are no EV chargers there, there is no lighting. And every time we've talked to the state about, you know, trying to find another place, they're like, oh, well, you have one. And who would use this as a parking ride? If you know the other park and rides in Vermont, they're right off the interstate, you know, very much nicer. Back to the right, so what you're seeing up at the top of the image is some of the trucking and associated with CNS and, and some of the other businesses. I think it's Warner Trucking or something like that up there, so you're, you're seeing a lot of that. You see the rail line where my cursor is. And then this is Long Falls Paper here with their lagoons. And so again, you can see just the proximity to the rail lines there. There are no active sightings taking place in this area. But you can see these are large buildings, they're industrial in, in nature or have a lot of impact if they're, even if they're trucking and warehousing. Back up to Putney Road. Oh gosh, what is the name of this housing? This is, for some reason, this one, Great River Terrace is on the left here. This was a converted motel into housing, they're micro units, next to Panda North. So now you're starting to see some of, this was a more formalized motel conversion into residential. Across this street is, is also residential. I think it was formerly a motel. It could, yeah, I'm not exactly sure what's happening here, but you can see, again, these are right across from each other. And so, you know, there's some people living in this quarter. And then just north of there, on the left is the Quality Inn. And next to it is the Hampton Inn, so these are two hotel motels. There are a lot of people that are living in the Quality Inn or have been over the last several years. That was part of the state's program. And if you look, you know, there's, there's no pedestrian infrastructure, just to drag that home. And then on the right is CNS, which is a large warehousing facility. A little bit, this is over the interstate. Just some more of the kind of commercial or office industrial type establishments that are around. And then finally, Old Ferry Road. These are primarily industrial uses. There's some large office buildings such as the, the Sheriff's Office, some former, you know, offices there. On the top, you have Allard Lumber. And then this is just a, middle left is again, just kind of looking at CNS. There's some, on the right, there's some mini storage and, you know, just a lot of industrial kind of uses there. And this is just another view, kind of, you can see Allard Lumber and more of what's going on up there. So assets, we've got, it's a transportation hub, there are flat developed parcels, large retail area for Southeastern. Oh, yeah, I, it, not really a retail area, though there is retail. It's a lot of traveler services up there. Direct access to 91, local bus service, municipal water and sewer, a lot of jobs adjacent to the rail line. And then I want to be mindful of the time, this is what we've done the last time, whether we should, you know, put no, limited to no resources into this area, commitment of town resources or substantial town resources into this area. And then just some of the considerations here is some of the same ones we saw for, for this area the last time. So state control of Route 5, brown fields was added. Noise, odor and traffic from the industrial uses, particularly in this area. Over the years, we've had some complaints about, about uses in this area. And it's one of the reasons why our industrial zoning is, is actually trying to segregate the kind of more impactful uses. And then opportunities, there could be more motel conversion into housing. You know, we do need multi-unit housing, that is what seems to be been built in town. It is a trucking hub, there's the rail line, there's a housing demand, three-phase power in this area. Yeah, so these were just some of the considerations for it.
John?
Just a comment, because, because I want to be mindful of the time too. This does not seem to me to be ideally suited for residential. It, it seems like underutilized industrial, but I certainly personally would not see it as being a ideally residential area.
The benefit of it residentially is that there are buses that go up and down Putney Road that service a, a range of locations, is that correct, Sue?
Yeah, it does go up and down Putney Road, it does go.
And, I mean, it may not look very appealing residentially, but it is near a lot of services that people use on a regular basis, like grocery store, fast food restaurants, urgent care center. It's not necessarily where I would choose to park my body, but I, I've noticed driving up and down highways, there's a lot of people who live in locations like this. So I guess people are either interested in living there or at least willing to live there. It always surprises me, but I don't guess everyone doesn't prize quiet maybe as much as other folks.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying not to be, I'm not, trying not to be crude, I suppose, but I could only see it as being residential for people that couldn't do better.
Well, I will say that, you know, if you drive out in like Eastern Mass in places like that, I mean, you know, there's routinely, or down in Connecticut, there's routinely, you know, large, even luxury style apartment complexes right on the highway or the train lines. I mean, you know, it's considered transit oriented development in some of those locations. So the, the developments I've seen in the past 15 years haven't looked like places of last resort in these types of locations. Again, it's not, you know, wouldn't be my preference, but people do seem interested in living in these types of locations.
Yeah, that's tougher. I think you get higher value homes in there, you're gonna get conflict between people who paid more money for homes, but now have to deal with CNS and the dump and, my opinion. I mean, this is all opinion, but that's, that's my opinion.
Are there vacant buildings that we know of?
There's.
Or, or vacant parking lots even, I'll include that.
Yeah, you're looking at several.
Yeah.
So, so why are some of those parking lots vacant? Because the buildings aren't used but underutilized?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, and they tend to be in this area, actually. I would say. There's like a, a pad here at the 99 that's vacant. There's, I can't remember the name of the building, it's the Red Barn looking building, that's pretty underutilized. So I would say in, in this area, you know, there's definitely parking lots that are, and, and, you know, you could, you could argue the Quality Inn and in here.
Why is that huge field vacant?
Oh, that's a long story. It's owned, it's owned by this, by this property though.
Well, I guess my first thought would be the property tax, you know, and the cost of mowing that parcel versus the property tax of the rest of the parcel plus their, their business. You know, the former is probably 5%, you know, 2%. So it's just like, it, it's, it's, it's barely even worth their time to look into doing a subdivision and getting into real estate and selling it off. Because who knows, some opportunity may present itself in the future for them, but, but yeah, yeah. I mean, that's the only big vacancy that I see, but a little parking lots here and there.
Do you know, if the owner, if that, that property is open to conversation about developing it into a green space? I mean, I've, I've built orchards in areas like that. It would be, it would be nice for, even for the air quality in that area to have that large be developed into some kind of orchard area, even Christmas trees, something that would benefit the environment and look, look better.
I don't know, Bonnie, I could have a conversation with BDCC and, and find out what they know about it.
It just seems like an opportunity, that space, whether it's, you know, whatever it is, I, I could see multifamily, income restricted there, I could see industrial there. It just seems like a huge piece of property that's, as, as Lindsay said, has access to a lot of things.
I see trees.
I know, I know.
Steve?
So I wanted to piggyback on what Lindsay said. I think it's, it's definitely worth looking at other examples of places where there's been, say, a, a first mover that starts the general transition of a place that really doesn't feel like it's friendly for being sort of mixed use and having more residential mixed into it and becoming more walkable over time. It, it can often be impossible to imagine it until something does come in and then the, the character starts to change a bit. And off the top of my head, Route 140 and around where I grew up, Franklin and Bellingham, Massachusetts, has a lot of transit-ish oriented development, very large multi-scale, multifamily developments that have popped up in areas that were entirely non-residential until quite recently. And closer to here, there's a couple of examples on Route 12 in New Hampshire and Route 9 in Hadley and Amherst, where there seems to be a cascade effect where if one successful, relatively large development happens first, then it can really become a lot more desirable, a lot quicker as, as other developments might suddenly get the idea.
Is this whole area zoned industrial presently?
So, that's a good question. So the east side bounded by 91 to the north is zoned service center. So that would allow for housing, just like, you know, it's the same zoning district that's south of, of it. The entire east side is zoned industrial, which is problematic, particularly in this area where you have Agway and the, the credit union. And, you know, there's just some uses right in this area that have become non-conforming. So that might be something where we want to look at this, you know. On our future land use map, we might make some recommendations for change there.
Just one other comment, not necessarily discussion, but I think if you're gonna put residential up there, you're gonna have to deal with transiting 9, if that makes sense. Getting from, from the north side of 9, across 9 to where the restaurants and grocery store is.
Oh, 5.
Is it 5? No, it's not.
Putney Road is Route 5.
What's that?
At this point, it's 5, yeah, but just south of where this cuts off, it's 5.
Yeah.
Anyway, that, that round is a very, very busy round and, and crossing it on foot is.
Yeah.
Exciting.
That's nice.
I've got it.
Yeah, as far as going back to that slide of how much town investment do we imagine in this? I mean, for me personally, it's probably just, you know, minimal again because of, doesn't seem like the time of, you know, vast resources and, and ambition with a town budgets and stuff. So it seems to me like some zoning and stuff and some incentives, like vacant building or vacant land taxes, you know, ordinances could happen and some, some zoning changes for change things around or have, you know, encourage greater density. But beyond that, I don't, that's just my opinion. I don't know if others want to weigh in on this slide? Because, right, Sue, is this the last thing you're trying to get from, from us about this?
Yeah.
Oh, Dan, sorry, your hand's up, I didn't see.
Uh, yeah, for lack of a better description, I guess we can all agree this is a transit corridor, right? I think, and I think we could come back to one of the issues that Sue raised, which is the park and ride for Exit 3. I think that, that sounds like a very solvable or a, at least in a, some, a problem that we could address. The 22 Brown Court location. I'm curious, you, you were, you alluded to the history of. I'm curious, you you were, you alluded to the history of discussions you've had, but at some point, we could, you know, we we could talk about that asset um in the context of all this. Uh not right now, but you know, I I think that would be a really good uh topic to focus on. Does that make sense? Uh uh Sue, I don't know if you want to elaborate on what you were saying earlier, but it sounds like an interesting problem.
Yeah, um just that when we've gone to apply, our sustainability coordinator has reached out to apply for some of the funding that has come up for um, you know, for uh EV chargers and, you know, creating this network and and also improving um or creating parking rides, you know, they always tell us, well, you have one. We're like it's not adequate, so um so that that's the brief. You know, story on that. But I do think, you know, it is something maybe worth pointing out um you know, in the town plan and making a project out of it or something like.
Yeah, it sounds like a very tangible project to to tackle.
I guess my comment would be that if you're going to, if if it is going to be low effort, then it seems like low hanging fruit to try and develop that large plot of land right on five. That's for whatever reason is now a big empty space. And you know, use whatever leverage we have as a town to in- incentivize whoever owns it to get off his or her ass. There's a lot of people in town that have owned land forever and just are sort of sitting on it.
If I could just, if I could just chime in, I I don't know if we, I I I mean, I I don't feel comfortable going in that direction myself, but I I just wanted to say that there's there's reasons for, there are you know, there are obvious dysfunctions in that area, for sure. And uh there are always reasons for these things. It's not like, doesn't, it's it it's not like it's um, it may be unknown to us, but it's not unknown to to someone particularly the property owners, so I I'm not saying that it doesn't, it doesn't have to be correct or, you know, acceptable to us, but it is the fact on the ground, you know, it it is what it is and uh uh unless you do want to go that route, as Tom was mentioning about, you know, vacant land uh assessments and all that, I I suppose we could go that route, but I mean, these these, you know, there are other vacant properties in that area which are vacant for all kinds of reasons and it's not through lack of effort that they, you know, they they are that way. Through a variety of uh I I don't even know how to how to address this, but I I don't think we need to go down that route of that that road of sort of questioning why things are the way they are. They are just, they just are the way they are and we can plan around them. They are gonna do what they're gonna do. Does that make sense? I I mean, I, are we, are we, I mean, uh the planning staff can answer this. I if we're in the business of telling property owners what to do, then that's I I'd like to know that.
I don't, you know, Dan, I I it's a longer conversation, I think, that we have time for, but I would certainly never advocate telling somebody what to do. I might incentivize them by saying that if you want to do what you're still doing, it's gonna cost you more.
In in fact, the select board is looking at that right now with vacant buildings. You know, but you know, to your point, Dan, there is, you know, there are some things out of our control and, you know, things like corporate retail leases that, you know, are really long and don't, you know, so sometimes we're combating some of that. Um I don't know the full story on full flex cases that I can can reach out, but um we do have a lot of passive land and property owners in Brattleboro who aren't incentivized to do anything because they're, you know, they're either a write-off or, you know, possibly still um collecting rent on it, so.
Are you giving out badges, Sue?
Deputize us?
No, anyway.
Okay, should we move on to um the water and sewer topics? Um this one's about the proposed changes to land use regs. We've seen this one a few times and um staff has maybe what, you know, maybe a final proposal for us and we can weigh in on it and then if we're ready, um vote on it, vote vote for approval.
Steve is gonna start this conversation.
So I will uh share the map on the screen. Um folks have likely seen this. It is at the back of the briefing uh that that I had sent out, well, Sue had sent out on my behalf uh the other day. So the short version of it is, we heard some input from you all in the previous meeting, um and there were a few things that needed to be tied up before we could um actually finalize this and so two things are different primarily than what you saw in the previous version. Much of the conversation in the previous meeting hinged on the split parcels uh in different zoning districts uh situation and whether or not that was desirable or or tolerable. And so we did some further refinement of the areas that we actually could justifiably say are serviced and in the very end of I don't know if you guys can see my cursor or not.
Can you see his cursor?
Okay, the very end of the area that was shown as uh likely in last time. Uh we were able to determine that there are some physical constraints that really made it so that that area wasn't justifiably serviceable anyways. It's very likely that that small lobe of this parcel, the biggest one in town, uh is going to be mapped into the floodplain uh when we get an update and then the access and steepness of the small area on this parcel that would have been in uh made that not viable as well. Um so those came out and we didn't have to worry about splitting zoning districts on those two parcels. Um and so as a result, what we're showing you here does not split any parcels. Uh which seemed like that was the preference uh at the previous meeting. And in addition to that, there are a few parcels with uh no existing service that are in the immediate surrounds of some of those that do either fully or partially have service at the moment. Uh that we're also proposing should be included in the residential neighborhood fifty-four hundred. Uh for the sake of having compact and logical zoning district boundaries uh insofar as it's possible so that we're not essentially doing spot zoning in reverse uh by leaving some things out without any good reason. I think that's really the the whole of it. Uh we can zoom in on this as well if anyone would like to see it in in greater detail.
Can you show the next page too? Well, I guess everyone received it already, the one that shows the actual additions, but only if you want to.
We can show both.
Sorry, sorry, I was trying to move the, I was trying to move the people. And then I forgot yours.
So we have um one moderately sized parcel over here, uh one large parcel here. Um an area of a few parcels here. Uh one here and a few medium sized parcels here and here. Uh and then, of course, the major difference is what we've uh talked about the most, which is uh over by the current SIT World Learning Campus. Uh and there is also some moderate, oops, a moderate change down here by exit one along Old Guilford Road. Uh and so zoom out and show you the next page. Um and this highlights just the actual parcels themselves that are being proposed to switch from one zoning district to another. Uh in almost all cases, it's from the rural or rural residential into the um RN fifty-four hundred. Well, in all cases, it's going the RN fifty-four hundred, but there are a handful of small parcels that are moving or are proposed to move from the institutional zone to the RN fifty-four hundred. Uh and those are, of course, SIT. But they are specifically uh these two here.
If a parcel, I noticed a parcel or two in West Brattleboro that um are uh on maps online, when you see what parcels are protected, you know, with, I guess, conservation easements of various flavors, there's a couple um that are in yellow here on this map that are highlighted in that, but but we don't typically zone based on that, right? It's just it it like those, let's just say, could be zoned urban center, but if they're conserved, then they're never gonna become urban center and then that's that.
We do have examples of that and then there are some cases like this one right here, this uh long infant parcel that's between some that are being proposed to change. That one I know is certainly under conservation and is frankly surrounded entirely by residential neighborhoods, so I mean, that might be an example of where we've used it in a certain way to determine where the line goes, but uh it it shouldn't be the case that any of these are uh under conservation, but um do you happen to know which which ones?
Oh, yeah, the um the uh, so they're in West Brattleboro, the um that that one um, that's kind of like a a two-piece, uh it's like an animal. It has a head and a neck. It's above and, yep, that one.
So it's actually this one here uh that that is basically the same shape as it. Uh my understanding is that that one that is white is actually under conservation, whereas this one that's in yellow is is not under conservation.
Well, then the maps online is inaccurate. And then another one that's green is the long uh one below the W in Western Ave. Yeah, that one's shaded green.
Yeah, I think we should double check and update our maps online because I used the state's most recent authoritative data set, so to speak, on um which parcels were under conservation. To to make this, so.
Does car, is current use forestry considered conservation for the maps online? Cause people can get out of that and just pay a little fee and that's not.
I don't believe on maps online, that's considered to be a conservation.
And and another question I have is that parcel that you last hovered over, um the yes, that one. So on maps online, that's two parcels. Kind of divided in the middle, is with an east to west line, but they're owned by the same owner. Is that why it's being shown as one parcel here? And and when two parcels are owned by the same owner, is that two parcels or is it one parcel?
So there are some discrepancies between what is on maps online versus the most recent state published database or uh data set rather of the parcels and the state has some idiosyncrasies with uh inactive parcels and I don't know what that means frankly. Um if anyone does, Brian might, but uh I think he even is a bit uh confused by what they think is uh constituting that and in many cases, as far as we're concerned, wouldn't have been a legal subdivision. In in not in any of these specific examples, uh but so there are some differences and we can certainly make sure that we're not showing anything um that ought to be divided into two parcels that uh is for some reason not accurate on this, but uh as far as I'm aware, um we've used the the most accurate data set that the state uh offers at the moment.
That that whole cluster that where the cursor is over and, you know, the seven other parcels or whatever that are to the east of it all along South Street there, I have a bit of an issue with that, you know, in including those because um well, for two reasons actually, and and it includes some of the other clusters too. I just I've I've been continuing to kind of approach all this as like, hey, this is the state mandating something. And including all these with the extra that staff is proposing, which is beyond actually what the state is mandating. They all may be reasonable and I think I'm reasonable. Other people, you know, who have reasonable minds may, you know, think you know, to include all of these, I I personally think that in this, you know, exercise and change to our zoning, we should do just actually the minimum of what the state is, you know, kind of forcing upon us. And then as far as large, you know, zoning changes to our to our our town, um that should be part of a process. That's just not, you know, tacked on to a mandate by the state. But then the, so then that point of view would apply to the the parts in the southeast part of town as well, in my, in in my opinion. And I want to know if other commissioners um understand what I'm saying and 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 if you agree or not. But the other thing with South Street for me is that when I was just at the DRB meeting about the proposed projects um by uh Wind and Windsor Housing Trust and 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 Groundworks, that's that the S of Western is over. Neighbor after neighbor after neighbor and staff before that too, I think, brought attention to South Street being really deficient with um public pedestrian and bicycle um access. And so that was, you know, everyone was saying like, hey, we love this project, we need more housing. However, if anything can be, this is dangerous, people walk up and down the street and it's just gonna be increased cause it's so narrow and there's no space, um and it's dark maybe, so I think especially in this situation, we shouldn't add anymore. We shouldn't densify that area until that's figured out. Or we shouldn't like open, open it up to being densified, especially when when we don't have to by the state mandate.
So if I can respond to that, I would say that I think it um by doing that, and I don't want to call it out of spite or suggest that it's um in bad faith or anything, but to do exactly as much as we think that they would require us to and nothing more for the sake of doing that, I think would sacrifice comprehensiveness and if I I don't know if I can actually mark up on this at the moment, but essentially if we were going to do uh will we, uh at least my understanding was that my understanding was that folks wanted to see parcels not be split into two different zoning districts to the extent that that's uh possible and so.
In general, in general, I I I think you've, in general, I agree with that, yeah. But I feel like there's a couple.
I think I can actually mark up, actually, maybe I can here, but so the the zoning district boundary, if we were going by that would end up looking you know, like that in this area, uh and so this whole parcel all the way down to here uh would envelop an area where we didn't upzone. And as well as uh it would require us to leave these two parcels, but not this one uh or these two, which are accessed by the same drive. Based on where the closest main is now, um so I think we we would be making arbitrary decisions now that would kind of make the zoning less comprehensive in effect. I think we would also be cutting off just two or three parcels here. And then we would also have like a donut hole here where everything else maybe it would be like this big.
The water and sewer goes all the way on that road?
It does.
It does. So it would just be like two or three parcels up on that hill there and I don't know, I think it it starts to look a bit like potentially spot zoning to to leave things out uh instead of considering a more regional.
And don't forget in the language that we discussed the last time, there's still that out if you cannot connect to the If you cannot connect to the water and sewer, then you're still at the one unit or one and a half acres. So that is the out. So, yeah, it makes for a more orderly kind of zoning boundary, which we are interested in. It takes into account a couple of non-conforming lots, so that brings them into conformance better with the RN 54. And there's still that out. It doesn't mean that you automatically get increased density.
And it would allow for that gradual potential expansion, if any, of the existing service territory to take place without necessarily forcing us to do this again at any point. Because, you know, there's significant portion of South Street there that it doesn't quite reach yet, where, you know, if it was to be extended a bit, then it would not suddenly beg this question of new parcels entirely. And to the, to the point of it being a difficult pedestrian situation, I mean, with the conversation that we were just having on Pudneer Road, I think we have quite a few situations like that that we could work through the planning process of getting those to be more pedestrian and bike, et cetera, friendly, rather than leaving them as is.
Okay, good answers. Commissioners, what are your thoughts?
We've got a lot of that.
I support staff's proposal. I think it's well thought out, and I think it's an attempt to get us a comprehensive solution based on the requirements that the state has given us, so.
Looks great, Sue.
It's all Steve.
And Steve.
Thank you, Gary. Dan?
Steve or Sue, could you give us any idea of any impact to the owners of these properties? What are, what are they going to, to see? Any changes?
Well, if they can connect to water and sewer, then they'll see increased density, for sure. And they wanted to develop or add units, they would see increased density.
And my understanding is this doesn't impact their property taxes in any meaningful way, if at all. And that's not something that we can or should consider anyways, but just, just to say.
Yeah, in Vermont, they tax on the current use of the property, not development potential.
Suppose in the absence of more comments, we could have a motion to approve this and vote on that.
A motion we approve it, Tom.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
John, get in there, I think, right before Lindsay. Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hands. I'm not able to see Lindsay.
I'm raising my hand.
Okay, so am I. So is Bonnie, so is Dan, so is Gary. Okay, unanimous. All righty, moving on to the other water and sewer topic.
Tom, can I just, I just want to let you know what's going to happen next.
Oh, right.
Is you had previously decided that you wanted to do this as an interim bylaw. So I'm going to transmit this to the select board, who would have to have a public hearing, and then they can make a decision on it. Interim bylaws are good for two years, so that'll be the next step. I'll keep you apprised.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks.
All right, moving on to my, a revisitation of my proposal about water and sewer. So I think we last saw this a couple of months ago, two months ago? Could have been three, two. This memo that I wrote that was in the meeting's packet for this meeting is the same as it was last meeting, but we didn't get to it last meeting. But potentially, you've had two commissioners and the public have had two chances to read this version and be prepared. Kind of a dense, few-page memo. I certainly, you know, I'm going to summarize it just briefly and kind of try to hit the main points or two and, you know, restate what I'm asking, requesting of the commission. But I certainly want to hear questions, any modifications, if at all, that commissioners need to hopefully, from my perspective, hopefully, you know, move some version of this forward. So, yeah, just to recap, because of the same, as the previous agenda item, the same impetus of, or the same thing that happened at the state level of kind of pinning the availability of water and sewer to increased zoning standards, density, and, you know, multi-unit dwellings. From my perspective, and I think it's, you know, I think it's valid, that this is a effectively like, like mandating zoning change without actually going through the zoning change process. Sure, it's limited, you know, this isn't saying like, hey, this area is now industrial, or this has to be conservation with no, you know, it's, it's not major sweeping changes. But, for example, in the, in the table that I gave on page two, you'll see that the result in density is that, like, if water and sewer becomes available in the rural district, then the state mandate is that now those property owners have the ability to develop it at seven and a half times. In rural residential, three, almost four times the density that the, that the towns agreed upon, you know, land use regs allow. And then also, in some, in those districts, it would permit three- and four-unit dwellings. Whereas presently, in our regs, like in rural, that's just not, those just aren't permitted. Or in rural residential and waterfront, they're conditional. So they have to go, you know, through some review by the DRB in a public meeting. So those are the two main factors. And the thing is that any expansion that the town may do in the future, and we, we heard from, you know, staff at a couple of meetings ago, that they can't necessarily, you know, there's nothing on the docket. There's nothing ready to, right, there's nothing ready to go and be developed tomorrow as far as the water and sewer expansion. But, you know, we write a lot of these documents and these town plans and these regs for, not just because something is, you know, ready to happen tomorrow, but because it's, it's goals and, you know, a blueprint or plans, policy for the future. So presently, if a water and sewer expansion is going to happen, I think, you know, it, it just goes to the select board for final approval. And I don't think they've really, you know, there's been no built-in reminder or, or, or requirement even, but, let alone requirement. But there's been no, nothing built in to say, hey, does this expansion actually align with the plan and regulations for land use and development in town? And I think, I think there should be. So, you know, whether a potential next expansion happens this year, or 10 years from now, or 15, I don't know, or never. But I think, I think it would be, to the extent that we, you know, value having a town plan and land use regs and zoning districts that have been thought through and community input has come into, I think that there should be in-town policy or ordinance, something that says like, either, you know, a very strict thing, which I've removed now in this version of the memo from the previous one from two months ago, was that the expansion needs to, and that was option one, and I've loosened it up now. But it was that a proposed expansion has to be in alignment with the town plan and the land use regs. So I heard from staff that, you know, that, that maybe doesn't take into account, you know, or, how should I say it? Might be too rigid and not allow for flexibility. So I changed that one to be, any expansion of the sewer service area. Oh, so once again, this would be the simplest and most relevant place where I thought to introduce this policy would be into the water and sewer ordinance. Perhaps there's another place, but this is the best one from what I could come up with. So I have four options in this memo. I'm recommending option two, but potentially another one, you know, could be an option that gets pursued, that we, you know, vote on approving and gets pursued. Potentially, we could, you know, if this is going to go to the select board, potentially, we could give them two options. We have like an ideal, this is what we want. But, hey, here's, here's a maybe more pragmatic or more bite-sized option. So the four options are, option one is that any expansion of the sewer service area shall first be approved by a vote of the planning commission. So that one just leaves it, leaves it open to a vote and of the planning commission. So it takes some of that, you know, decision-making power and puts it on us. But it's flexible in the sense that whatever motivates commissioners to vote yes or no is what motivates them to move yes or no. You know, they're supposed to, we're supposed to follow our, the purview of our roles. But option two is that any expansion of the sewer service area shall first receive a letter of support from the planning commission in which a determination is stated that the expansion and its potential consequences are in alignment with the duly adopted plan. And that's the one that I think is the most, has the most integrity because, well, because there's plenty of documents and, you know, that say that, I mean, the land use regs and the town plan and the whole town planning process are supposed to actually have, you know, tangible, a tangible connection to reality and the future, you know, and, and follow through with, with how decisions are made in town and development. Option three isn't really a specific option that I have formulated. It's just like, hey, perhaps there's another approach than inserting this provision into the water and sewer ordinance. Perhaps our land use and development regs can add a section or add a part that requires, has requirements for water and sewer expansions. I don't know if that can happen or not, or perhaps it can, it can go elsewhere. Then option four came about because in chatting with Sue a bit about this, she said at the, at least at the time in that email, that, that this is something she could, she could get behind or, or not be opposed to, which is that, which is that any expansion of the water and sewer service area under consideration needs to invite and provide opportunity for the planning commission to issue an analysis based on the town plan. And so for that option, I would propose that that, similarly to options one and two, that the language like that gets put into the water and sewer ordinance instead of just being like a, a policy that, that is hidden in some drawer somewhere or that, you know, staff has to and commission has to remember exists. So that's the memo, that's my, that's my proposals. And I'd like to hear what people think and how they want to move, move on this. Dan?
I'll make a motion to recommend to the Board of Water and Sewer Commissioners that Chapter 18 Water and Sewers of the Code ordinances be amended in accordance with this memo's option number two.
Great Roberts Rules implementation. Is there a second for that?
I would entertain that second.
Okay, Gary. Any discussion? Dan?
Yeah, I think I've asked this before, but I don't know if anyone's had an opportunity to look into the question of whether this same conflict has been, or has arisen, or has been an issue with other town planning committees or staff in other, in other towns in Vermont?
No.
It's a pretty fresh thing.
No, I mean, we, we haven't looked into it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
And that's above my pay grade to look into, Dan.
No, fair enough. I was just wondering if, you know, it seems like this would be, I think I've said something to this effect before. It seems like this would be a universal problem in every town if this conflict were a generalized problem. And if we're unique in this regard, I would be.
Well, there's not a lot of towns in Vermont that have water and sewer.
True, yeah, okay, so of the towns that have water and sewer.
Yeah, so no, I, we haven't looked into it with the towns that do. So I don't know where they're at. I could throw something out on the list serve, but, you know. Towns in terms of how they operate their water and sewer ordinances, the ordinances all look different. I did look into some of them to see if the planning commission was involved in any way, and I didn't, I didn't see that, but.
So I, if I may, so Sue, you may know more about this. My understanding of this in general is that the state is trying to make it more palatable, more, more, more development-friendly for towns that have water and sewer systems. Is that correct?
Yeah, the, the state needs thousands of housing units, and they're trying to stop, you know, they're, they're trying to, you know, a lot of towns have restrictive zoning, so they're trying to.
Exactly, so, yeah, and to put a finer point on that, I mean, basically, we're talking about NIMBYism against housing development that, you know, when you have the house, when you have the water and sewer infrastructure and still, for whatever reason, people are against either multifamily or even single-family homes being built on a piece of land, it, you know, it, it's, it's prevented, it's blocked, right? And so I, I think that.
Just to jump in really quick, I don't think, I think, I think, I think it's well, well regarded. Brattleboro is regarded as not, not being one of those towns. Like, we've been behind this, like, hey, let's densify and allow, you know, a fair amount of uses or a pretty liberal amount of uses in the water and sewer districts. We've been that way for, I don't know, since the 2015 land use reg, you know, revision. So those sort of NIMBY, very restrictive towns, like Brattleboro is not one of them.
Brattleboro is not.
Well, okay, I'll leave that where it is. But I, I suppose the point of the state stepping in in this regard, right, is to at least, let's say, allow more, to, to do exactly what you're concerned about, Tom, which is superseding the authority of the local planning commission, right?
Where water and sewer already exist, yeah. I, I found just, you know, and it's hard to say what the, the full legislature's, you know, individual, you know, intents are within people's brains. But as far as the news articles I could find about this, I just found a quote in Vermont Digger that said, several, about this, these, these acts that we're talking about here that have these implications, "Several provisions, including new density requirements, specifically apply to areas served by municipal water and sewer, and the bill's proponents say they're intentionally directing new housing into areas that are already served." Right, so I think, you know, six months ago, when we first talked about this, I was like, hey, the state shouldn't mandate that. So now I'm just focused on potential expansions of the water and sewer district in town. And so as far as the legislature's intent, you know, from this one quote, I already gave caveats about that. But it does say that their goal was to direct new housing into areas that are already developed, right? So that means where the water and sewer district already is. So, I mean, my, yeah.
I apologize, but I, I've kind of lost the, I've kind of lost where we've gone with this conversation. Are we still talking about option two in your proposal? Are we talking about the state's power?
Yeah, I think Dan was getting into, what was the intent, you know, and where, where were some of the, the, the? The drama and, and intents behind.
It's kind of pointless to talk about the state's power grab because they, we're not going to change it.
No, it might impact your choice of which option to choose because the, the level of, let's say, severity of involvement that the planning commission is going to have. of involvement that the planning commission is going to have will depend on which option you choose. And that depends on what the intent of the state law was to, to enact, right? I I would just say we're not impervious to nimbyism, quite frankly, and and, you know, that that. There is a certain wisdom in allowing a a universal sort of rule to to take its course, you know, it may not be the gloom and doom that. I I'm sorry to characterize it that way, but it seems like you're predicting that this would lead to a problem, and I don't know that it will, but that's just my, I don't, I really don't know.
Right. I'll try to respond to that briefly. I suppose, you know, so other towns, when when they are at the point of deciding to expand the water and sewer down a street into a new development. There's, there's nothing, in my understanding, in these state laws that went through that say like, you have to. When there's an opportunity to expand, you have to do it. And then these laws that we've put into place then have the ramifications that they have by mandate. Like, this is, there's nothing in it that says you have to do that expansion, that's possible. So what I'm trying to interest, you know, in get in. Trying to implement in response is that we just take into account the town planning process and align, you know, the town plan's documents and the decision makers in town who are going to decide about any possible water and sewer expansions. Take that into account through, you know, any of these various option methods. So, I mean, as far as i- if if this doesn't go through and 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 a town plan processes and. Considering the town plan and land use regs isn't built into the decision making process, like, is it going to be doom and gloom? Well, I mean, you know, town staff and the select board do good work and make good decisions. So maybe we don't need any volunteer committees to to weigh in on things and consider things because they do a pretty good job. But like, if we respect the process and think that we're here for, for, you know, a valuable reason, and it's good to have extra eyes and ears on things. Then that's what I'm trying to interject into the process, basically. Well, both, Stan, both staff have their hands up. Yeah, Steve?
I had a clarifying question to Sue that I, I guess is rather pointed, but as it presently exists, the select board are the water and sewer commissioners. They're elected by the public. They have discretion to not approve an expansion of our service territory or capacities. That's correct. So, I mean, it seems like this is a problem that has a existing process.
Yeah, but when we change density standards or or use types in zones, we go through the land use reg amendment process and the planning commission considers it. It goes to a public hearing that the, that the public, that the planning commission hosts. Then it goes to a select board meeting that is warned as a like land use and development reg amendment. Whereas if we just go with the status quo now, a potential water and sewer expansion that has these land use implications is just going to be warned at once, one or two select board meetings as a chain, well, as as like, something like a funding, a project request by Dan Tyler of DPW to expand the water and sewer district. And like, none of the public is gonna know that there's land use and development implications and changes to the the standards as a result. Sue?
I'm not going to respond to that because, you know, to some extent it might be true. However, any extension that has taken place is a really long process, usually between a developer and the town. And there's, you know. Yeah, I mean, it probably takes place in executive session and then there's, you know, discussion or at a couple of meetings. What I want to talk about is your options. So option three is not legal. Planning commissions do not have the authority in land use regulations to deal with water and sewer expansions. My concern with option one and two is that you're basically asking the select board to give up their authority as water and sewer commissioners, because the way it's written is has to first be approved by a vote. That means, you know, right, are you talking about an affirmative vote there? And number two is receive a letter of support. And so, as I mentioned the last time, there may be situations, for example, you know, we have, we're only using half the capacity of our sewer system. There might be advantages to doing extension financially or just in the way the system runs and stuff that that's maybe not captured in the town plan. So I guess just with option one and two, be aware, you're basically recommending that the select, select board give up their authority. Because you framed it in such a way that it's only moving on if if it's voted in the affirmative or you get a letter of support, which is why I've kind of, I'm still with. If the planning commission is looking to be inserted into the process, then I think it should just be an analysis or just some thoughts that, you know, a letter that's received by the planning commission to consider the. You know, looking at the town plan, maybe land use implications and that kind of stuff. So I'll leave it at that.
Dan?
Uh, Tom, as a matter of protocol, should we vote on Lindsay's?
Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah, if we're ready for it. Yeah.
Well, I'm just saying, it it might allow us to move on to other op, to other options if if that were the case.
Right. Yeah, I guess I'll just say in advance, if this vote doesn't move forward, I have an idea for a, if Lindsay's motion doesn't move forward with how many, you know, four, four votes in favor or more, then I have an idea for a sec, not a revote, but a second version, which maybe will be more palatable than more. But yeah, so are we ready to vote on this one? I guess we all want to say yes, but if anyone's not, then say something.
Ready to vote.
Okay, and recall that the motion, Lindsay's motion, was to basically go with my proposal. It was, it's there right at the beginning of the memo and it's for option two. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay. Oh, Gary's hand is up too. Okay, all those opposed? Dan, John? Okay, and those abstaining? Lindsay and Bonnie. Okay. I will then follow this up with a motion that, just like the recommendation states, we propose to the select board option two, however, option four as well. We give the select board two options, option two and option four. And otherwise, it's, it's exactly the same as that, that first paragraph in the memo. It's just instead of option two, there's two options, option two and option four. That's frequently what I've seen staff and others give to the select board, you know, multiple options in a memo.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Lindsay. Is there any discussion on this one before the vote? Dan?
Uh, sorry, Tom, I just, I I have to ask. So I understand that may be the protocol that's been followed in the past. Without the type of discussion we've had, I don't know that the select board will be, select board members would be as informed about what they're choosing. And I guess, if anything, I would suggest that the staff be the ones to frame these options. And maybe that option four should be.
They don't want to.
Sorry, well, or some somehow that, well, that, okay, that, or re, or to rewrite option four, okay? Because option four just does not seem well thought out at this point. I mean, it it seems like. You know, there, there, there's, there's some, that could be better worded. If you're giving those two options, right? So four should not have the word somehow build into, you know, and perhaps and all that. It just, just kind of like lay it out, okay, what should this look, what should this other option look like?
So, yeah, but but is, totally, thanks for that specific clarification, but is option four clear enough about what it, what it wants such that if we were to move this forward? Then, and if, I hope staff would be willing then to then improve option four's writing?
Yeah, I can help you with that.
Yeah, Sue said yes.
I'm not going to carry the ball on this, but I will, I will help you.
Regarding option.
Well, just see, so I'll just ask you point blank. Uh, Tom, it seems like you wrote option four, but it was based on something that Sue might have commented.
Basically, Sue, yeah, Sue commented like she would, she she could support and that an analysis that 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 the planning commission can do an analysis.
So just take out the somehow, you know, the the directive is build into the town policy or protocol that any expansion needs to invite and provide the opportunity for the planning commission to issue an analysis plan based on the town plan. That's fine. I I don't think the last perhaps is even necessary. That's just very simple, to the point. You know, it it's, anyway, that that would be my request, if we, if we are going to approve this motion you're making, Tom.
Okay. And 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 I accept that that modification. John?
My comment is that, in my opinion, this whole process is wrong. We should be going quietly to the select board to see what authority they would be willing to give up and then framing a resolution from the planning commission that is consistent with the authority that the select board is willing to give us. It's very possible that we might take whatever option we give to them and they're going to say. And then we will have spent three, four meetings discussing this, you know, for, for no purpose. And I I'm sorry if I sound critical, but it's just the wrong process. And so just to let you know, I'm going to continue to vote no on it.
All right, I'll I'll weigh in a bit on that. I think the select board's busy. I think they, 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 they field a lot of different topics. I think they often don't want to get into the weeds with a, with a fair amount of things. Unless there's, you know, dozens of members of the public coming and like talking about public safety downtown or something. Then they'll, they'll really hash it out for, you know, for an hour or two, over and then over multiple meetings. I think if we were to move forward with, with, you know, approving this next motion, I would have a conversation outside of a select board meeting with a, a select board member or two, maybe three, and try to get a pulse from them and, and, you know, I totally respect what we voted on, but might massage and modify this a little bit. And.
And and I think that's a wonderful process, Tom, and I would, that would be a motion I would actually support that somebody designated from the planning commission goes and talks to the select board and presents to them what the issue is and why we think it's very important that what we're suggesting happens and see what we can negotiate in terms of a cooperative process between the planning commission and the select board. Come back and then we can create a, a motion based on that.
So do you want to put somebody on that page, Tom?
You know, I think though that.
I mean, I don't have an opinion necessarily one way or the other, but it just seems. It seems like a waste of energy, frankly, without knowing what the select board is going to give us in terms of authority to be taking a and certainly just be, to revising, revising, revising it, proposal. I mean, Tom, you're very interested in this, you're very knowledgeable about this, you should talk to the select board and see what they're willing to compromise in this. Maybe take Sue as, you know, kind of a joint person who can provide expert input as well. Why do, why are we proposing this? What's the motivation? What's the problem to be solved, if you will? And let's see what they're willing to agree to, and then from there, we can create the motion.
And I think they feel confident enough, whatever decision or whatever you're bringing, Tom and Sue, so in the past, so. I I would definitely entertain that as well as, you know, going forth.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, if you come back to us and say, this is what we think we can negotiate with the select board, I'm certainly not going to debate the issue, which you guys are the experts, so. That's my opinion.
Yeah, I guess I was just. You know, one thing I feel like if I bring this to the select board. A question, questions, you know, first of all, I don't think they're going to want to spend official meeting time, right? On on an unformed, you know, little tech, you know, technical issue like this. So I would have to go to select board members one at a time outside of meetings. I think.
Sure, but you know the politics. I'm sure you can figure out who the couple of key select board members are who are going to be the influencers.
But another, so. It's, it's a fair amount of time and investment to 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 have these much more, these, you know, several more conversations and and make these arrangements. Oh, shoot, I lost my train. There's something else I was gonna add. One thing I think I'll hear from them is that, well, what does the commission think? Because they advise us. What what is the commission, what is the commission, you know, had discussions about this? And what's their recommendation? So it's going to be the circular thing.
I will give you, I I personally will give you my, my vote to speak for me in terms of what the commission thinks would be the right answer, as long as you take staff with you to provide, to present a concerted front. I I dispute that as a valid argument. And I'll, I'll sit back now. I I don't want to.
Yeah, no, so so if I go with staff and meet with individuals or no more than two select board members at a time and. I mean, would you be willing to do that, but you'd have the caveat of you support for, option four, but not option two?
Well, I can lay out the issue. I can let you speak to.
Yes, lay out the issue and then don't.
I understand the issue you're trying to tell.
Do you feel like this, this warrants scheduling individual meetings with select board members and having like at least three discussions with them and and, you know, educating them them on this before the potential of it even being on a meeting?
I do like the suggestion of trying to feel them out because I think bringing a proposal to them might make them feel, you know, caught off guard.
Don't people bring proposals to them all the time?
Yeah, but you're the planning commission, you're appointed by them. I mean, so we can have this kind of working relationship.
That interim zoning bylaw is just going to show up at their, you know, on their.
Yes and no. They know a little bit about it. Some of them do.
Okay.
I mean, Tom, do you feel confident enough to do that? If not, you'd rather have, I mean, just trying to weigh in to see.
I feel confident. It's just, I just, you know, I, I just didn't expect to spend this much time on this, on this issue.
Right, and 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 you feel that, you know, this is something that you want to take time out weighing in?
I don't, but I guess, but I'm not going to let, let it drop because that, that bruises my, my sense of worth. So I'm gonna keep, you know, keep, keep going at it, but potentially three more meetings with people.
I don't know that this is something that would be taken up really quickly by the select board. They're about to start a rate study. And I think Dan is expecting to want to make some changes at some point. So, you know, slowing it down, having that conversation. You know, I don't know that it, that it. You know, puts off making an ordinance change in any way, but I can't really speak for them either, so.
The argument I would make, though, that is, I think taking them, taking to them a planning commission proposal is not going to be any more successful than dealing with them offline, in fact, likely less successful. For Sue's reasons, for a lot of reasons, right? For Sue's reasons, for a lot of reasons, right? And we've spent a ton of time on this. So I, I would hate to see us spend that much time and then get nothing out of it other than to take a proposal to them and they say no, and then where are we at that point?
So you, John, basically wanted to just get your feelings out early rather than wait?
I just think it's the right process, Gary, to, to take it to them quietly and, and in a conversation and see what they're willing to give us and then go from there in terms of what we propose. So that we know our proposal is consistent with what they're willing to give us.
It's in line. Okay. I see what you're saying. Cause and, and as we all know too, coming March, you may have the same Select Board, you may have a different Select Board. So there's going to be a different purview. So that being said, maybe, I mean, it doesn't hurt to bring it to their attention, at least you'll, you know, have an idea of what direction to go with it.
True.
Couldn't, uh, couldn't this board stay on top of whenever that particular subject gets put on their agendas and then do a type of analysis and bring it to them if it seemed pertinent? I mean, there's nothing that says right now that you are prevented from doing that. Uh, to, to weigh in on that as the Planning Commission, just by putting it on your agenda.
As staff of this commission, are you going to have that institutional memory for on and on to remind us?
No.
Shoot, Sue shook her head now. Steve, I mean, what, what, what?
I'm saying it's, it's on their.
We're not career commissioners who are going to, we're going to, it's going to change.
If it's something that's critically important and it's, it comes up, then it could be put on the agenda of the Planning Commission to talk about.
Sure. Anybody can weigh in about anything they find out about at any point. You're right. Um, Lindsey signed off, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. I retract my motion and, um, let's move on to the grants discussion.
Okay. Um, so the last meeting, we talked about, um, a potential downtown transportation fund grant. Um, and we talked about ideas. One of the ideas that we want to move forward with is to make improvements, enhancements to Bridge Street, which is the road that basically goes from Lower Main Street, um, to the old Hinsdale Bridges. Um, it requires a recommendation from the Planning Commission and then, um, uh, support from the Select Board. So tonight I'm taking it to you, tomorrow night to the Select Board. Um, basically, uh, the grant's due on February 17th, so we're still working through it, but there have been um, an artist and a retired engineer and landscape architect that have been working on plans to kind of improve the waterfront area. And with it, they've been looking at changes to Bridge Street, um, widening the existing sidewalk, which is along the Whetstone Brook side, adding a new sidewalk adjacent to the retaining wall at the Brattleboro Museum, narrowing the turning radius right now as you kind of come up towards Main Street. There's a right turn lane and a straight lane if you're coming off of Bridge Street. We don't need that anymore due to the levels of traffic. Um, so that turning radius could be narrowed and then adding crosswalks and, you know, maybe planters and, and lighting. So kind of the first phase, we're, we're looking to, it's being estimated right now, but I'm seeking approval for a $200,000 grant. There's a 20% match, which, um, might come from in-kind services from the Public Works Department. It might come from some special projects funding we had set aside for bike and pedestrian improvements. Um, this grant is consistent with our Walk Bike Action Plan and with the work that we're doing on the Canal Street corridor. So that is what I'm seeking, um, Planning Commission support.
Sue, what, what, what's the motion you need from us? Just the general support for the Bridge Street work or the specifics?
It's to recommend applying for a downtown transportation grant for enhancement to Bridge Street.
I, I move that we do what Sue just said we should do.
I, I second it.
All right, let's have a little discussion. Because I know I have some points to bring up. I brought up this idea of, um, since our last meeting to Sue of a railroad quiet zone. And I did a little, and, and that's where Commissioners, where you can, um, it's something that a municipality applies to the federal railroad, whatever, agency. And, um, you know, you, you have to meet some certain criteria or have some certain safety, um, features such that then the FRA will say, okay, yeah, you have enough of these safety features. So the trains that pass by don't need to make that, you know, building shaking, ear piercing, um, you know, horn for 20 seconds each time because the safety features you have, um, uh, compensate for, for the otherwise, um, horn. Um, so from what I saw online on various sources, it said, depending on what the, you know, the municipality and the requirements and, and what they already have, putting in a railroad quiet zone can cost between $30,000 to a million. Right? So that upper end is pretty high and way beyond, you know, just, just rolling into this fund, um, grant. But potentially an analysis to find out what's needed could be done, could be rolled into this. I don't know if that requires, you know, I don't know if any of those three people, Sue, who you mentioned, I don't know if, well, it, it's going to go, it's going to be an RFP or something that goes out, but, you know, potentially there's some expert or some, you know, person who can, and I would imagine just looking at the criteria and assessing what that intersection looks like, you know, the, the railroad with Bridge Street. I mean, what's that going to cost? $5,000 or something? Just to have some expert just be like, hey, yeah, this is, you guys are going to need to spend half a million dollars in order to qualify or yeah, you guys are partway there and all you need to do is a simple thing. That's, it'd be another $40,000. At least we'll know. And yes, I haven't heard anyone bring this up before, but I think.
I'd never heard of it.
Right. I think people just haven't heard of it. I think a lot of people don't, I mean, people talk about the logging trucks all the time on Main Street because of the noise, right? I think people just don't know that you can, a municipality can get a quiet zone and then therefore have an improved soundscape. I think, you know, that's a gamble I'm willing to make. So I, do you think, Sue, that's something that can be rolled in?
Yeah, I have to look at the budget, um, but, you know, and, and see who can do that kind of work, but I think it's a, you know, it's an interesting idea.
If we, if we define beautification really broadly, that includes the soundscape. So, okay.
It's an enhancement.
Yeah.
Right, my knee. Oh, Bonnie stands up.
Yeah, Bonnie?
Yeah, like I live, you know, um, 20 yards from the train and I kind of like it. So, you know, when I first moved here, it was noisy and now, and now I love it because it, it's just a nice sound. So I think, I don't think it's a problem. And I, I probably, Morningside lives as close to the train as anybody probably and nobody complains about the sound. Just FYI.
I think people don't know that they can complain about it.
I would piggyback on that as a, to put my member of the public hat on, uh, I also, you know, probably live well within 500 feet of it. Um, I can't hear it from my apartment and it.
Why's that?
I just can't hear it at all.
Have you ever stood on Bridge Street when the train's coming? Did you hear it then?
Yeah, but I mean, in my daily life, living very close to the train track, although not as close as, uh, Bonnie likely. Uh, I genuinely, I can't hear it from my rickety seventies apartment. Uh, I can certainly hear road noise from Putney Road, so I, I fully resonate with your comments about trucks, but, uh, regardless, uh, I'd love to see if there's any good data on how much the trade-off is between quieter versus people being hit by a train. Because I feel like it's a really, really different.
Presumably the reason for the safety improvement criteria that people, the municipality spend is that it offsets the safety gain of the noise. Like it's, it's not just like, hey, you guys want to not hear the noise? Okay. 51% of people in town vote for it. It's like, no, there's actual like barricades and medians and flashers. Flashing, you know, there's other things that make up for it.
No, I'm, I'm going to, I'm going to edit my motion slightly to everything Sue said with a request from the Commission that she look at the cost of a study, but will leave it at, because of the timing, will leave it to her discretion whether or not that can be included. In other words, she doesn't have to come back to the board.
Sure.
Well, I actually judge my time on that train here on Canal Street, so I know what time it is. So I don't know if we want to do that.
I mean, I like train noise too, but.
I love it. I'm from New York, listening to the subways too.
Trying to avoid the, at 8:30 at night, the discussion of train noise. It's selfish of me. I agree, but so that, that would be my motion, that we suggest that she include that and she can make a decision based on her own best knowledge as to whether or not to add it. So that she doesn't have to come back to the Commission.
Well, I, I was just thinking, I mean, like what Tom was saying is for safety. I mean, do we really need to do that? And like just do a survey on noise or, or a train? I mean, that's pretty average for trains down here. So, I mean, we've had accidents, we've had incidents. So I'm just trying to see the level of importance of that.
Yeah, Sue, how about it's just up to your discretion if it looks like this can be looked into?
Yeah.
And, and, and will take up a, a minor amount of the grant and seems feasible?
Yeah.
And then this is in no way saying that we're going to move forward with a quiet zone. It's just like, hey, this is something that interests some of us at least, and it can be looked into for a future.
For the town plan.
Possible, you know, investigation and plan and, okay.
Those are bad.
Can we, um, though, can we get a vote on that?
Yeah, yeah.
Yes.
Um, unless there's anything else on voting on this DTF grant. Um, I'd like to see hands for all those in favor. So this is something that I'll sign, um, to represent the Planning Commission, that this is a project we're in favor of. Yep, that's all five of us.
Great, thanks.
Okay. And in the remaining time, I think we can just touch on the municipal planning grant, right? So you're not looking for an actual decision?
I'm not. So, um, the municipal planning grants do the end of March. Um, and this has always been a good source of funding to do, um, planning studies. Um, we currently have a municipal planning grant. We're working on the cultural plan, which is going to be used to inform our town plan. Um, we also have like two other grants. Well, the downtown transportation fund grant, we have an existing one that needs to be closed out. We have the one that we're going to apply to for, we have a Better Connections grant. So we have a lot of state grants right now. So I don't want to go in big, uh, with a big project for the municipal planning grant, but I was thinking that it could be good to, um, supplement some of our work on the town plan, particularly in terms of mapping. Um, we can do in-house mapping, um, but Wyndham Regional Commission has done a lot of our, the required maps from the plan in the past and would probably be pretty quick and easy to, um, do some updates for us. With the various types of maps that we need. Um, and then, you know, we could also consider if we wanted a little help on a particular chapter or on any outreach, but I'd like to keep something limited. I don't want to go in with a maximum request because I'm not so sure we'd be successful. Jen's hands up.
Oh, John, please.
So, um, I know it doesn't require a motion, but what I was thinking was that perhaps the Commission could support the use of an amount of money at your discretion, staff's discretion to be used towards the town plan activities with leaving it as general as possible so that we have some flexibility in regards to where we use that money depending on needs. Now, I, again, I know you have to write some detail in, in these plans, but I'm sure you're qualified at writing in the detail well enough that we might have some flexibility still.
Now, do you have an example? Like, what do you mean, like, like, like paying for, for the, the hosting of a venue or like pizza or posters or?
Yeah, so, so obviously the mapping would be one option. I think another option that I've talked with staff about is, uh, perhaps having a consultant come in and run some of these community, uh, communications meetings to gather data. Right? A, a professional would be, do a much better job than, you know, a, anybody sort of volunteering. Another possibility might be one of the chapters that doesn't have a ton of focus on it right now. You know, we've talked about uh, potentially economic development where, you know, there's a kind of a, sort of a gap, if you will, on who's doing economic development planning for the town. So perhaps a little, uh, goosing of the activity there with some money might be valuable as well. I, I wouldn't necessarily at this point be able to give you my personal recommendation. So that's why I would suggest that overall, I think it's good to be used for the town plan. It's just a question of, you know, as the, as the final deadline comes due for writing the, the grant, then we could decide what specific seems to be the hottest issue at the moment. Uh, that's my opinion.
I hear all that, but I also heard Sue, maybe I missed something, but I heard Sue say that because of all the grants we've gotten from the state, it seems stra, and it seems strategic to not ask for too much this time around.
Yeah, and I apologize. I, I wasn't specifying a number.
Okay.
I, I think Sue's recommendation to keep it, whatever Sue thinks the appropriate number to ask for is the right one.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, I can give it some more thought over the, um, over the month and come back in March.
Yeah, and so maybe the agenda item in March is you, Sue, you give us three or four options that you think are the highest needs and then the the Commission can chew on it for a while in a, in an agenda item and give you a, a priority list of sorts.
Dan?
Uh, yeah, just a detail, Sue. Uh, I don't see who this municipal planning grant is coming from.
It's the Department of Housing and Community Development.
Okay. I just don't see that on the memo. I don't believe, but okay.
But it doesn't have to be housing related, it sounds like.
What's up?
Doesn't have to be housing related, it sounds like.
No, no, it's, it's the Community Planning Division. I mean, they also house housing, but yeah. Could be housing, but it's not.
Is that, uh, so Sue, when you come back to the March meeting, we can talk about where that, what the grant proposal looks like. Yeah, great.
Wait, but when you, when next, like, how's it going to look different than how it looks now? There's already a list of three things.
So I can flush them out a little bit more and, and get some possible costs and be able to make a recommendation.
Oh, I see. Okay, great.
And just for clarification, Sue, this is just for feedback or just a survey? This trying to get a?
Just feedback, yeah.
Okay. This is like someone you hired this to do, do the feedback or ask, you know, people in the area?
Yeah, it could be, could be. Any number of things.
Okay. Let me know. I don't want a badge.
Well, all right. Have our public comment period and seeing no public, that's over. I think we touched upon and significantly, um, dealt with all of our business. So I think I can just adjourn the meeting.
Thanks, everybody.
Motion and re-adjourn.
Don't need to, Gary. But thanks for your, I don't know, your echo.
I'm practicing for March.
Okay.
Thank you, everybody.
I call the question. Bye-bye.